Chairman Singleton, pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Carmen Ziegler.
Let us pray. By Heavenly Father, we just thank you for so many blessings. We thank you for the blessing of living in a country where we're free to make decisions, to live without repercussions sometimes for what we say, that we have a chance to get out in front of people and voice our opinions. But we just thank you for so many blessings that we have here in Montgomery. We have great opportunities here, Lord. We're going to recognize some of our schools today. There's always so much negative about Montgomery sometimes, Lord, but there's so many positive things that we sometimes, the headlines in the paper is always negative. Well, we've got some great, great things happening here, not only in our education, but our industries and in our citizens. Lord, just ask you to continue to bless us today and bless each one of these commissioners, that we're going to make decisions that's in the best interest of the entire Montgomery County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the roll. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Vice Chairman Sankey.
Here.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We're going to do the presentations.
Yes.
Come on up, Ken, and tell everybody on the first one on the.
All right, the first presentation will be, we have Christina Thornton and her staff from Montgomery City County EMA. The commission will be presenting to them the National Preparedness Month proclamation, and then Ms. Thornton will be just talking just a little briefly about National Preparedness Month. And I believe the proclamation is.
Who's got the, I think Tammy, do you have the proclamations?
That might be it down there at Dan's seat. We got to get you one more signature.
Which one get that?
I always sign it.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me my Jim Cantore moment. It really worries me when people think it's just, I show up just for bad weather.
Bad time.
So I'm looking for that now. I want to take, thank you all so very much for, one, recognizing all the hard work that emergency management has done and continues to do for our community. It's not just tornadoes, it's not just being out doing the warming center or tornado shelters for people that have inadequate heating during the year, but we are also out in the community throughout the year. Up here we have our logistics officer, Shay Redding. She is our Community Emergency Response Team instructor, as well as our grant writer, who looks for grants and ways for us to better improve Montgomery emergency management, Montgomery County, Montgomery City, and Town of Pike Road. We have Gary Barron, he is our Operations Section Chief. He is fundamentally instrumental in everything that goes along with Alabama Department of Public Health and everything we do for the Strategic National Stockpile. Montgomery is responsible for the entire state of Alabama receiving those products, especially, we learned that during COVID, and getting all the PPE out to every hospital, EMA, county agencies, whatever it happened to be. And our newest member, we have our Planning Section Officer, which is Edmund Jones, a recent graduate from Jacksonville State University. He's actually working on his masters right now. He is spearheading what we're bringing up as far as our local emergency planning committee, working with Hyundai, Mobus, Coca-Cola, Hagerhenge, daycares, schools, to make sure that our community is prepared, no matter what the disaster du jour is, and to make sure that we're here for y'all no matter what.
Kristi, I'm going to present this to you, and on behalf of Montgomery County Commission, I'm not going to read all the whereas's on the proclamation, but the last one is therefore be resolved. Montgomery County Commission recognizes September as National Preparedness Month in Montgomery County, encourage all residents to stay prepared year-round, presented this fifth day of September 2023.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
We get all of you all.
Yeah.
Director Thornton, it is into your staff. People have no idea all you do, and if they follow you on your social media, they realize how many things y'all are involved in. Thank you. We want to be back here.
I've seen this lady on Christmas morning, made up all night on Christmas Eve.
Make sure you're in between. So you can basically, that's going to change.
Cold and the weather's low freezing. I've seen numerous, numerous times.
No, you're good, you're good.
She is an unbelievable lady, and her staff too, most of y'all down there, but what a great group, so.
Absolutely.
No COVID today?
All right, next, we'd like to welcome to this, the representatives from Lamp, Bru Tech, and BTW High Schools for their recognition as well.
I'm just going to start clapping now. Come on.
We do have three proclamations. They all on being different things, but first one is congratulations to Loveless Academic Magnet Program Lamp on being named as the number one high school in Alabama by U.S. News and World Report. Congratulations to Booker T. Watson Magnet High School on being named as one of the best high schools in Alabama by the U.S. News and World Report.
Ms. Smith, thank you.
And Bru Tech Magnet High School, named one of the best high schools in Alabama by U.S. News and World Report. Again, you know, it's, MPS is always an easy target for people to criticize and complain about, but we have some of the best of the best, not only in the state of Alabama, but they're recognized across this country. I wish Dan Harris was here because all three is in his district now. I don't know how that happened. And yeah, in your district too, it's all three in the district, but it's due to the great, great leadership. I wish Dr. Stark was here to join us today, but thank you for what you do on behalf of MPS and on the board. Thank y'all for what y'all do, and just, we have fantastic leadership in these schools and the principals. I mean, just, I've had a chance to work with them, different ones. Actually, I umpired Jason when he was a little boy, even though he looks older than I do now, but I did have a chance to umpire him as a little boy. So thank y'all. Congratulations. We'll get a picture again with the commissioner.
How are you? Good to see you. Congratulations. Thank y'all. They're all real quiet.
Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you for being here. Please tell Keisha we missed her. She's my favorite principal. At BTW.
Quisha.
Quisha, do I mispronounce it? Squisha.
Okay, we have public comments.
I call it Dr. Stark.
Veronica McKenzie, Executive Director of Successful Living Center.
Yeah, I love her. Do what? Are you making fun of me now? You can. You're so tired.
Yes, my name is Veronica McKenzie. I'm the Executive Director of Successful Living Center Adult Daycare Program. We specialize in the care of people with dementia, with Alzheimer's and related dementias. We are having our second annual Karen and Sharon Workshop. This workshop is for caregivers and people taking care of people with dementia. On the back, you'll see some of the sessions we're having. We, our caregivers give millions and billions of hours of unpaid services, and also, they suffer sometimes from their own health challenges. So this workshop is designed to teach them how to take care of themselves while they're taking care of their loved ones. The commission was very gracious and donating, each commissioner donated $1,000 last year towards this event, and I'm asking you, because of increased cost and everything, if the commission would so kindly and graciously support us in the amount of $1,200 for each commissioner for this event. It'll take place at the Crump Senior Center on October 20th, 2023. It's been from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m., and we'll have a cooking demonstration to teach them how to make health, quick and healthy meals. We also have a physical therapist from the Rehab Select coming to teach them how to transition and move, and that's based on evaluations from last year. We had caregivers say, you need to have somebody to teach us how to transfer our loved ones without hurting our backs. So we have a physical therapist, OT, coming to speak with them about that. We're having someone from Jackson Sleep Disorders Clinic come talk about sleep hygiene for the, for the loved one and for the caregivers as well. And so, we also include exercises, exercises caregivers can do along with their loved one while they're taking care of them at home. So if there's any questions, and we invite you all out to come and check. The last, last year, we were able to give out nice bags with a lot of information, create booklets and print materials that they can come home, go home and use as a resource after our event.
Anybody got any questions for Ms. McKenzie? Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
Oh, thank you.
Florence, at the end of the information session, I know we was hurried, did we move forward to next agenda on Dan's proposal on the offer money? We did not do that? Okay, I was just curious. Is it too late to put that on next agenda for the next meeting? Okay, because I'm sure he wants us to vote on it, so. That's all for today on the public comment.
Next, we'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15th, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider the accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider resolutions outlined in items number five through 12 regarding polling places.
Florence, I know we talked about omnibus, and the Vice Chair Sankey has asked us not to.
All right.
So let's go through them one at a time.
What I, if I'm not out of order.
No, don't go ahead.
What I wanted to do, Mr. Chairman, was offer an amendment to the one that pertains to County Commission District Four. It seems that based upon some additional conversation with the attorney and the staff from the election center, that what I'm actually agreeing to is the boundaries as drawn based upon the 2020 census count. And of course, I was, I think I expressed my concern about that when we voted on that. I abstained from that vote, and I don't want to come back and say I agreed to something that I did not agree to during our initial vote. So I'm, certainly, I would, all in favor of adding precinct 414, but not in favor of saying that I agreed to the boundaries as drawn. And I'm wondering, how can we address that?
So Florence, if I understand Commissioner Sankey correctly, he wants to make an amendment to the wording a little bit on the one that pertains to District Four, which is number 10. The other ones, we can omnibus together as written, but then on number 10, let's take number 10 out. So let's omnibus all of them that accept number 10. Is that okay? Tammy, do we need a vote on those individually?
We can do a vote on one for the omnibus, and then we'll do a vote on 10.
By the time we done done all this, we've been done gone through them by now. Let's just go through them and do one at a time. Let's just do that. We can go and do it and make it simple on everybody.
Consider a resolution approving the relocation of polling place in precinct 101 in District One. So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving the relocation of polling places in precinct 204 and 206 in District Two.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving modifications to precinct boundaries and approving a new precinct and polling place in Montgomery County Commission District Two.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving name change of polling place in precinct 305 in County Commission District Three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving relocation of polling places in precinct 301 and 304 in County Commission District Three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving modifications to precinct boundaries and approving a new precinct and polling place in Montgomery County Commission District Four.
Mr. Chairman, that's where I want to offer the amendment if I could. I certainly want to approve of the new precinct 414, but I'm having some concerns about authorizing the proposed modification to the precinct boundaries. It seems to me that I would be agreeing to something that I was in, that I disagreed to when we voted on approving the boundaries as drawn based upon the 2020 census.
Okay. Is it okay, Florence?
And what would your proposed amendment, how would that read?
Well, it's just that I approve the creation of a new precinct 414 with the polling place located at New Home Baptist Church, an address on Jones Road. And we just scratched that the commission does hereby authorize the proposed modification to the precinct boundaries.
I believe, go ahead, Michael.
I believe if you do that, you might leave a certain part of the population or some of the census tracts out, which would put somebody not located inside of a district now. Ms. Stevens, is that correct? I mean, we've got to account for all these census tracts for the voting precincts, and if you leave it out, then, I know there are percentages that had to be met to make sure they comply with regulations from the DOJ. So I'm just hinting on that. I just want to know if I'm correct on that.
Yes, that's correct.
So we would have to make some sort of accommodations for the ones that would be left out.
I'm not sure I understand. Who are we leaving out by making them?
It depends on what kind of amendment you want to make about what part not to include in the drawing of the new precinct.
No, I'm not trying to leave anyone out, and I certainly don't want to make this difficult by any means. I was concerned, and I thought I had made my question clear to you, Mr. Attorney, that if I agree to that, that meant I was agreeing to the, the boundaries as drawn based upon the 2020 census, and I think I expressed some concerns about that when this body voted on it.
You abstained that time.
Yes, sir. So now I would be coming back and say I agree with what I abstained on.
Changed mine, you know, it's been time. I didn't, I wasn't thrilled about the red district in either because I lost 11,000 people I didn't want to lose. But at this point, if you wanted to abstain on this.
Judge Lovell, you have any comments on this? I'm just curious. Then we're going to move on. I don't want to hold this process up.
Well, it appears that if we've gotten to this point, then you all have already approved what, you know, the boundary lines as they were redrawn as a result of 2020 census. So I don't know if the amendment is necessary, then you would just abstain on the vote if you wanted to be consistent with your prior vote, not taking the position on the, the initial vote to approve the, the new districts.
Okay, all right. That, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you, thank you. Thank you all for your time. I don't want to, you know, not create any problems. Let's move on.
So can we just leave it like it is?
Yes.
So is there a motion to consider a resolution approving modifications to precinct boundaries and approving a new precinct and polling place in Montgomery County Commission District Four?
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving relocation of polling places in precinct 501 and 505 in Montgomery County Commission District Five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution approving modifications to precinct boundaries in Montgomery County District Five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution to procure engineering services.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution to extend levitate legal contract for no more than 12 months.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a contract with Bradley Plumbing and Heating to modify exhaust system at Montgomery County Detention Center Building Two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a GIS master agreement with Keet Consulting Services LLC.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider amendment number one to a contract with regional produce distributors for milk and juice for the youth facility.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with the inclusion of a $2,000 appropriation from Commissioner Harris for Vaughn Meadows HOA.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of a $1,000 appropriation from Vice Chairman Sankey for Bad Boys Organization, and a $40,000 appropriation from joint designated revenue for the Alabama National Fair.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a bid award to Buffalo Rock Company to provide vending machine and micro-market services.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider travel training requests for engineering, finance, grants, and the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
That's all our, our items.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing to add.
Deputy Administrator?
I just want to highlight that on Saturday morning, I know this commission assisted with Tech MGM funding the STEM Fest. I had the opportunity to take my son, and it was a great attendance. The event was well receptive. I mean, most of the kids stayed until noon when it ended. There are a lot of very interesting things, and as we talk about having great high schools that we have, STEM is going to be very important in that in the future. And I really would like to applaud you all for making that funding commitment to make sure that programs and opportunities like that are available.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
I don't have anything to say today. I'm going to be, listen, I think we've done enough today, and, and so I'm just going to leave it, leave it in the hands of the capable Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Sankey.
All right.
Commissioner Walker?
Well, I do have something to say.
I knew you did. That's why I was leaving.
Two things. I had dinner this past week with all of the presidents of my HOAs in my district, and it's just so encouraging to hear the positive things that are going on in the neighborhoods. And all of us work with our HOA presidents, and, and I remind them that they really do make the world go around, not the ones that, you know, pick on, pick on. No, we don't have any presidents in my district that pick on their residents as HOA presidents, but they're wonderful, and I appreciate all the hard work that they do. And the second thing is, we had a lot of good football to watch this past few days. I started out Friday night with high school football, all day Saturday. Hopefully, you all got to see the Colorado TCU game. That was just good, exciting football, football all day. Then the Red Tails Classic Sunday night. If you, if you've never been to either the Red Tails, the Camellia Bowl, the kickoff, y'all please go. It's highly accessible, tickets are affordable. Go to the Camellia Bowl. It's going to be on December 23rd. That's the Saturday before Christmas. I just strongly encourage you to attend that event. Such a fun atmosphere. Montgomery really showed out. Ron Simmons and Experience Montgomery with the Chamber absolutely showed out. Montgomery was, we, we had all had something to be proud of this whole entire weekend. And then there was a little bit of football yesterday. What about, I mean Clemson? Dude beat Clemson. So, just fun. We love football season. So that's all I had to talk about. Go ahead. It was no fun for Clemson, but LSU also getting beat. So, some of the top dogs getting knocked off.
Vice Chairman Sankey?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, just want to say that Montgomery County is a great place to live, work, and play. And so let's just continue to try to enhance the quality of life for all of our citizens here in the county.
I agree with you on that one.
Thank you, madam.
We had the municipal elections a couple of weeks, or last, well, last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was.
Two weeks ago.
And so let me encourage everybody on all elections, regardless of who you voted for, who you supported, the decisions have been made, and now it's time for us to get behind and support everybody that's been elected. Not only City Montgomery, Town of Pike Road, the county, the state, the governor, the president. president, whether or not you voted for them, whether or not you agree with their philosophy or agree with their agendas, it's still our president, it's still our governor, it's still our mayor, it's still our elected officials, and I think it's very important that we get behind and support whoever is in the office, because I'm gonna do that, because I look out for myself, I'm selfish. I want my life to be better, and for my life to be better, we need a city that's prospering, we need a state that is prosperous, and the river region, the Weetumpka and Prattwell and our sister cities to be successful. So, I would encourage everybody to come together and let's work together to make this area of central Alabama and the state of Alabama best that it can possibly be. I will be, next meeting, I will not be here, I'll tell you upfront, I will be in Seoul, Korea with Ellen McNair on the State of Alabama Economic Development trip to Hyundai to visit with them and continue to strengthen our relationships. I will not be at the next meeting. And lastly, I want to commend our staff here at the county, we have just the most amazing staff, you know, you saw a lot of them speak today, and they're so very, very good at their job, but they're like family too, and they mean so much to me and the rest of the commissioners. I lost my puppy last week.
Uh-oh.
Show you this, I'm gonna cry. But they're all signed. I need a motion to recess into executive session. We will be in executive session for a few minutes, and then we will officially, okay, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a motion to...
You can't do that motion.
I'll do a motion to adjourn this meeting upon completion of executive session.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before you hit that gavel, we forgot something. And my apologies to the wonderful Alabama State University. It was a great game this weekend, beautiful gala that we had, participated in, and we want our hats off, because we got to understand, it's a great HBCU, but most of all, most people that work for us and here in the city come from a great university, Alabama State University, and I say that from my hats off to it, because I am a product of a mother who attended and graduated from that great university.
Is that it? This meeting is adjourned?